Good evening, everyone. And welcome to our town council meeting of August 17th. It feels like August out there. Of April 17th. And Rebecca, we please call the roll.
Councilmember Andrews.
President.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazio. Vice Mayor First.
Here.
Mayor Condon.
Here. Thank you. And today I'd like to adjourn the meeting wishing Bob a speedy recovery from all of us. If you will all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda right now is open time for public comment. And that is for anyone who has anything that they would like to speak on that is not on tonight's agenda. So may we have our first speaker. Barbara?
I come here tonight as the former chair of the AAC or the ADA Commission. These past few weeks I've been working with the Planning Department because I'm putting in the new doc. And we didn't always get together in an evening keel, but we found a way to do it. When we, what we did as a commission over seven years, we took that nine-volume system, booklets, that identified all of the ADA issues by street address. And so when someone came in, or contractor came in to ask for a permit, then the way it was done beforehand is they would go out and check the permit later on. And at the last minute, they would be on site, find that there were ADA issues, and then tell the contractor at the last minute that he had to fix the ADA issues. This was provided if the original contract was more than $10,000. So we put it online so that when a contractor came in, they could go by address and they could find out right then and there, instead of going through nine volumes, that there were ADA issues at that address. And the contractor was told right away that this would be an addition. And the contractors were happy because they weren't told at the last minute. So it worked perfectly. And the feedback that we got from the Planning Department was very, very positive. What's happened is, looking at the Planning Department right now, is that most of the people there are, haven't even been there two years. And I know that I ended up leaving the commission in 2013, which was more than two years ago. And so I happened to mention to one of the staff down there that what we did, and that I thought that this would be something positive that they could use, were they using it? Using what? They didn't, they had no idea. It had not been passed down to the new employees or the new management. So I came, coming here tonight to ask the council to take something out of the budget and we go through a training session. I'm going to recommend that you probably talk to Dan Ring, who was our town liaison. And he was our main person that actually dealt with coast land. They did a tremendous job. And I think that it would be really happy for the Planning Department and also happy for the residents, since many of the times, they don't mesh together. And that's not this town. I would like to see this town a lot happier, especially in the area of permits. I have no complaints against the Planning Commission. I'm just asking you to go through that. And probably Dan will have, Dan doesn't know I've come here tonight, but I think that this would be a positive thing for the town.
Great.
You don't have to vote on it tonight, but I'd like you to consider it.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay.
Can I make just a quick clarification?
Yes.
No, that was a beautiful and very eloquent comment, so thank you. I just wanted, for the benefit of the public, to say that ADA stands for Americans with Disability Act. So she's talking about accessibility for those with disabilities.
Well, we also have to pay a huge...
Yes, but I'd just like to clarify the acronyms, because in local government, we have a zillion acronyms. So I just wanted to clarify, that's Americans with Disability Act, ADA. Thank you. That's all right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak on an issue? Okay, see none. We will close it to public comment and go on to presentation. And tonight, we have presentation from our Park and Rec Director, Mario Fiorentini.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'd like to start out by talking very briefly about the goals that our department set out for this past fiscal year. We identified several goals that were presented to you in the budget. And those were to work on with our Park Recreation Commission, evaluating our system for pricing as well as cost recovery. And I want to say that the commission has been a tremendous help over the past several months, working with staff and really struggling with some real interesting philosophical questions about programming and pricing and age groups and scholarships and just the spirit of community that we've really, I don't want to say take for granted, but really, really appreciated here in Corder Madera and joined with Larkspur in many ways. So that goal is in progress. We're doing, we're doing some great things and we're really looking forward to the experience and leadership that we have with Dave Wilkinson, who's on board. And he's really reviewing that and studying that and really giving us some, giving me given us some good feedback to present to you in the coming months. So wanted to mention that. The increase in efficiency through development of the website, I want to say, has been something that we've struggled with for the past several months. But I want to say that it's been a huge, huge team effort. And I mean that in the sense from the staff at the Park and Rec Department, but as well, Rebecca and Todd have really given us a lot of, a lot of help with Lorena, who's been assisting us with developing the website and giving us insight. And I have a few numbers to give to you as well, to show that there has been an increase in efficiency with the website. So we do appreciate that and we look forward to expanding that next year. Increase in revenue and participation through programs as well as rentals. I'll give you a few, just brief numbers, which, a few things which we, over the past fiscal year, we've actually increased the participation in our programs by 10%. And I mean that with the amount of folks that are, that are, that are coming to the Rec Department, they're signing up for different kinds of programs, which is, you know, a modest increase, but, but we really appreciate that, that we feel like our marketing and our website, the help with the team with the website has really made a big difference. So we appreciate that. One thing that was, was part of our goal from last year was our, what staff viewed as skewed numbers for our online versus in-house registration. And I'm happy to report that we do have an increase in online registration for programs. And that's upwards of 12%. And we're looking to increase that even more for this coming year. Program revenue has increased 20%. And rental revenue has, rental revenue for the community center has increased over 10% from the last fiscal year. And that does not take into effect the fee increase that we have planned for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's without, without a fee increase. At this point, last year, the summer playground registrations have doubled from this point last year, which, which is a big deal for us, because that's, that's something, a core program that we're really looking to make sure that is a huge success this year. And that has to do with, with some folks that I'll introduce to you in a minute, but the dedication of really understanding that summer playground has been a core program for the town of Corder Madera and the Twin Cities for a long time. And really dedicating a lot of time for marketing, going out to camp fairs and really explaining to folks that are new to the community, what the program's about and how it works. So it's been, that's been a huge boost so far. And one quick thing I want to announce that is something that we're, it's actually a little bit ahead of schedule. And that is that we are actually launching next week, an online reservation system for our picnic sites, which is something that we didn't expect until next fiscal year. But there will be some PR and a email blast going out next week for that. So we're looking forward to that. And that's to try to streamline the process of folks making online reservations for picnic sites, so they don't need to call in or come in, that they'd be able to do that through our website. So looking forward to that. And of course, working out the kinks. So at this time, I do want to introduce to you our core team that's here in support. And I really appreciate them being here this evening, because they're not used to coming to council meetings or Park and Rec Commission meetings. But I really like to start off with two of our newest employees. I'm not talking about Dave Wilkinson, but I am talking about Debbie Corrali, who's our front desk customer service representative. And she started in July of 2017. Debbie, thanks for being here. And Pam Waterstone, who also started in July of 2017, who's our senior services coordinator. And really want to, Debbie and Pam have been just a tremendous added asset to our team. Pam has came in actually, interestingly enough, to apply for a front desk position. And she has, in the last 10 months, really taken on her new role, her role that we offered her as a, as a senior services coordinator. And she's been pivotal, working with Age Friendly and launching the new intergenerational center that will be open in just a few weeks. So really appreciate all your work on that, Pam. Thank you so much. Nancy Cupp, who couldn't be here this evening, is also another one of our customer service representatives. She's been here since 2005. She has a tremendous amount of knowledge about the park, the community center, and how it operates. We really appreciate her support and help and loyalty. And she's, she's somebody that we couldn't, we couldn't meet the deadlines that we do without. So we really appreciate her help as well. Want to introduce Christina Ennis, who's our kids' club after-school program director. Christina's been here, been with us since 2006, and she's been running kids' club since 2009. Her son, Bear, who has been attending kids' club as well, is, has been fun having a new family type of environment with the community center. So we appreciate all that she's done with the program. She's actually going to give a presentation to the Park and Rec Commission on Monday night, talking about the last few months and potential plans for next year. And then I'd like to introduce Lizzie Basiri, who amongst many things, has started out with us in May of 2008. She's worked for Kids Club, she's worked for Summer Playground, she's run Summer Playground, she's worked for our special events, she's run our special events, and she coordinated most all the special events that you all saw during the centennial year. So we really appreciate her help. She just completed, two years ago, her undergraduate degree in early childhood education. And she just received her teaching credential from Sonoma State University. So congratulations to you, Lizzie. Next, I'd like to introduce Ashley Parrott, who is our 2018 Summer Playground Director. Ashley's worked with us since 2012. She is graduating from Dominican University next month, with a Bachelor of Science in Biosciences and a minor in Chemistry. So congratulations to you, and we look forward to a good summer. I left a big, kind of big empty spot for our esteemed recreation supervisor, Brian Hernandez, who's been working for the town of Corder Madera since 2001. Brian has, I think between everybody here, everybody, Brian has done probably more jobs at the community center than anybody else. He's, since, since the beginning, he's, he's lined soccer fields, he's set up for weddings, he's run kids' club, he's assisted with developing the summer playground program, he's run special events, he's done presentations to our Park and Rec Commission for different programs, he's found new programs and brought them to the community. And somebody that I really couldn't, couldn't operate without. So Brian, I appreciate all that you do and, and thanks for being here this evening. Last but not least, certainly somebody who's been on both sides of the battery at this point, Dave Wilkinson, who is our, is our current Park and Rec consultant. We appreciate you being here this evening. I can't, I can't express enough how much I appreciate the support from the council and the town manager and the city with allowing Dave to be here and working with us. He's been here for the past three weeks. And he's been a real, just incredible asset to be able to, to speak to, to understand different parts of our community, to be able to have conversations that sometimes are hard to have. And I just really appreciate that his, his leadership and dedication to the community, because this is where he started. And, you know, really appreciate him, him being able to be here and, and me being able to bend his ear whenever I pull him aside. So Dave, I appreciate your help. Thanks so much. With that, I'm glad everybody's able to be here, obviously, without the exception of Nancy. We do have a lot of other staff members who are a real key part of the court group, who work after hours, who work on the weekends, who probably nobody sees very often. But they're all huge, huge parts of what we do in operating the community center, which is almost a 24-hour operation, not quite, but sometimes close to it. And, and we express our thanks and gratitude for all that they do, especially for the folks who, who work and play at the park and the community center and the gym after hours on the weekends. So we do appreciate all that they do as well. That's really all I have to say. I want to introduce everybody. I really appreciate you guys being here. Thanks so much for all that you do and supporting the Park and Rec Department and me. So thanks, guys. Be happy to answer any questions regarding anything coming up.
Well, I'd like to say something first. For those of you that don't know, April 29th, Sunday, is the grand opening of our Age Friendly Intergenerational Center. And thanks to Mario and his team, we are going to actually be opening on time. And with only a couple of things lacking, but they're coming, they're coming. But it's a work in progress. And I know that, speaking on behalf of all of Age Friendly and the intergenerational task force that we have going, that we really appreciate. We know it's been a tough road to hoe for you guys, that giving up your space and downsizing way before your age has permitted that. And we're just, you know, moving in there and, but it's something that I'm really looking forward to, that it's a real, true, public-private partnership. And that we will be working together. And I invite all of you to come to the opening on Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00, the 29th, Sunday the 29th. And the very next day, on the 30th, we're open for business. And can I ask, how many of you, Corder Madera residents, got your little postcard? Oh, yay. Okay. It looks like it really worked, huh? And we tried our best. We sent out 4,400 with the hopes that you'd get, ooh, Karen, great. Good. And so anyway, and that was done not on the town's bill, but when we talk about public-private partnership, the private part is Age Friendly Solutions, which is a 501(c)(3) tax deductible organization that is, has been developed exclusively for funding the intergenerational center. And so it was this particular group, rather than out of the town's coffers, it was from Age Friendly Solutions that paid for the cards and the mailing. So we welcome donations. And for those of you that are interested in the really wonderful programs that we're having, for sale at the opening, or just not this week, but starting next week, you can buy a membership. And for Corder Madera residents, it's $15. It's tax deductible, it's a $15 donation. And for that donation, you may attend any and all activities for the rest of 2018. If you are not a Corder Madera resident, then your donation is $25. And that will entitle you for participation for the rest of the year. If you don't want to buy a membership, it's not real cost-effective, because it might be going to one particular event one day for $10, where you could go for 15 for the whole year. And it is tax deductible. So we hope that everybody will participate. If you read today in the IJ about the sophomore at Redwood who designed a prosthetic arm from a 3D printer, I don't know how many of you saw that in the news. But we are going to have a 3D printer. And the gentleman that is going to be instructing on how to use it, is the man that was coordinating that particular project at Redwood. So we've got from 3D printing to chair yoga to storytelling for preschoolers, crafts, movie book day, which is amazing. You read a book, we'll tell you which book, and you can go to the movie, it's, a movie's made from the book. And then we will show the movie, and then followed by a discussion comparing, contrasting the movie and the book. So on your card, you can see all the programs. And we will be expanding in June, sometime in June, where we'll have more space. Okay. Are there any public comments or questions for Mario? Yes?
Is that $15 for the family or just...
Per person.
Per person.
Per person. Oh. Anybody under 18 is free. See? That, now isn't that, that's a good answer, right? So, okay, anybody else? Okay. Mario and our Park and Rec team, thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, Mario. Okay. Onward. We go now to the consent calendar. And the purpose of the consent calendar is to group the items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They can be pulled by anyone on the council staff or a member of the public. Yes?
I'd like you to pull 4.1.2.
Okay. We will pull 4.1.2. Can I ask, Rebecca, are you, is there anything that needs to go on the screen or are we okay?
We're doing it right now.
It's up there.
Okay, so are we okay?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything else that we want to pull?
No, but I'm going to, just so you're aware, I'm going to abstain from 4.1.6.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I will move 4.1.1 and 4.1.3 through 4.1.6.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes, but abstain from 4.1.6.
Councilmember Ravazio? Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Andrews, what is your question?
Well, basically, I wanted Todd or the engineering staff to show us what we got for our money.
Being that I have no engineering staff, I guess we'll try it. So, so again, this is a follow-up to the great work of our Flood Board and our senior civil engineer, Kelly Crowe. As you know, over the past few years, we've been focusing a lot on the Mariner Cove subdivision and slot drain improvements. And an example here of some of that work, you can see, this is one of the streets on Mariner Cove. After rain, this could be weeks after a rain cycle, this is what some of the streets look like in Mariner Cove. And some of the work that we've been doing, this is the slotted drain, so this is the same roadway after a rainstorm. I'm sorry, I don't, I can't turn it the other way, but again, it's a...
We're all totally in.
But this gives you an idea, this is, again, the slotted drains here, this is the work we're doing. And it's been really successful. This current project, in the fiscal year, it was bid at $800,000. Our lowest responsible bidder came in with a couple change orders at $730,000. We're looking at doing 1,500 feet of improvements, slot drain improvements, in the center of Mariner Cove. Harbor and Echo are next on the list. And so it's been really successful.
Thank you.
Right. Good news. Good news. And thank you, Jim, for pulling that. Okay. Can we have a motion to prove that, or do you have any...
No. I'd like to move 4.1.2.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio? Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay. And then on to our public hearing. We don't have any sanitary district items tonight. So this will be a public hearing on the appeal of design review application, P-12017-0127, for the addition of a second story to an existing single-story dwelling at 109 Golden Heine Passage. And first, can we get a report from Doug Bush?
I'm just going to, you know, Madam Mayor, before we get into the item, just want to make a disclosure about, this is about, this is the item, the public hearing on the appeal of the design review application we're doing now, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't believe there's any conflict of interest of any kind, but in, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I think is the right phrase, I'd want to disclose that roughly 10 years ago, maybe in excess of that, my family hired the architect who represents and did the project to do work on our own home, Maureen Jokum, whom I have not had contact with in a decade and have no financial interest or other connection with in any kind. It does not and will not affect my judgment, and I have no sense that it will have any impact whatsoever on, on my decision-making tonight. But I wanted to make that disclosure in case there are any comments or questions of any kind, I could answer them at this time. If not, I'd ask that we continue, but I wanted to make the disclosure.
Okay. Thank you. And along that vein, I don't believe that I have a conflict of interest. I am the liaison from the council to the Chamber of Commerce Board on which Margaret Deedee sits. And, but I do not feel that that will have any influence over my decision. Okay. So Doug, do you, I just want to do this right, it's a statement disclosing, well, we did the ex parte communications. I drove by. Did anybody...
I walked by.
You walked by?
I visited both properties.
Okay.
The same.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah. I didn't talk to the people, I observed it myself.
Okay. Very good. And so then can we, please, Mr. Bush, have a staff report? Or are you doing it?
No, Doug, Doug will. I just wanted to acknowledge that we did get a phone call, and we didn't get a formal letter, but I believe the town clerk did pass along an email acknowledging that we did get a request to postpone the hearing. In the past, when we've gotten those requests, we've asked the council at their discretion if they are so inclined, they want to take that up at the beginning of the meeting as an issue to discuss or to decide upon. So I'm, give the council the opportunity to do so. We do note that there appear to be representatives of both parties that can speak to this request as well.
Okay.
This evening.
And I had asked Rebecca to, to check to see whether or not the applicant wanted to... to continue this to another time, and they did not want to.
Right.
So, with that in mind, I will ask just for discussion on the council, if you wish to postpone, or if we should continue this evening.
Can I ask a question? Adam, who did the request, and what was the basis for the request?
So, Rebecca and I both received a phone call from one of the appellants, who noted that they would be unable to attend due to health reasons, and that was the, yeah, that was the extent of it.
Okay, and, but a health that would be, did they say the nature of the medical reason? In other words, something that's about to be corrected, or this would never be able to attend?
I'm not sure, I can kinda, it was, it was a pretty, pretty simple phone call, but it was just requested based on that basis.
Okay.
Health issue. So, it sounds like you may be able to attend in two weeks.
I see, okay, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on whether you wish to continue for two weeks, or to carry on?
Madam Mayor?
In the past, it, yes?
I'm sorry, I just have one other thing, I'm sorry, it was outside. I just want to just really state something, we take appeals very seriously as staff, and being really sympathetic for the person trying to get the project done, as well as the appellant, and we've made, we've really stepped back, and as you know, looked at our agendas, and really tried to strategize to get it on the next available meeting, and that's what we did in this case. And so, when we really, we look six meetings out with our agendas, and what's coming our way, for instance, all of June is the budget, it's really, it's going to be intensive for this council and the community and staff. When you look at May, we have projects coming our way, and so, we really strategized this, giving priority to the appellant, and we did that in this case. I'm sympathetic to the issues, but I really, I strongly urge council to consider as a practice, and especially in this case, to keep, keep it as is, you know, an appellant has a lot of opportunities, as we shared, they can have someone else come in and speak on their behalf, they can submit something in writing. I feel strongly in this case that if we're going to hear the appeal, we should consider hearing it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Because it has a big effect on us moving forward.
And that would be consistent with the last request that was made, too, and rather than continue what we actually held it. So, if that's in agreement, if everybody's agreeable?
I would agree with that.
One question I have is, in terms of the town ordinance, I can't remember the exact wording, but I thought it was sort of the next available meeting, or?
That's, that's correct, the ordinance specifically speaks to this, I think, in anticipation of these sort of questions, and it's the planning, the next available hearing is when it's to be scheduled. As far as exact language, I don't know, Adam might be pulling it up, but, but that's the, that's the directive from the zoning ordinance, is that it shall be scheduled for the next available hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that we've agreed to just continue it tonight, to go forth with it. So, Doug, you're on.
All righty, so I just have a brief, a brief presentation, wanted to highlight a couple of additional materials that have come in since the staff report was put out last, last week. There should be two, I believe, two letters that were provided this week in support of the project. Additional copies have been provided at the back of the room, as, as usual. So, just wanted to give a brief overview of this application. This is a design review application that was first submitted in November of last year. It went through two planning commission hearings before it was ultimately approved by the planning commission. This is a design review application for an addition around 700 square feet for a second-story addition to an existing single-story, single-family dwelling on Golden Heine Passage, and I'll go through a couple, just briefly, a couple of the drawings, just to provide some context. Let's see if we can get this going. There we go. Okay, so this is on Golden Heine Passage, this is a neighborhood, and I'm sure you're all familiar with, and it sounds like you all had an opportunity to go out there yourselves as well, but these are level, these are relatively level lots of consistent sizes. This is showing just the location of 109 Golden Heine Passage. I believe the address of the appellant is 110, which is across the street there to the west. Again, this is a neighborhood that's kind of characterized by a mix of single and two-story dwellings. This is a photograph of the, of the existing, of the existing structure. This is in the floodplain, which is why one of the components of this project is to raise the, you know, elevate the structure to meet floodplain development requirements. I believe it, it's required to be raised two and a half feet. The FEMA level is 10 feet, the town adds an additional foot on top of that, and so, in this case, that, that means a raise of two and a half feet. The garage is not required to be raised, but the rest of the house would be with this addition, so that is reflected in some of the elevations, which we'll get into in a moment. Here are the elevations reflecting the existing structures you can see, it's a three, three-bedroom, you have the copies of the, of the plans available as well. This is showing the location of that upper floor addition. Again, it would not go over the entirety of the lower floor, it's more centered over that garage and over the northern portion of the, of the structure. It's stepped back at all, at all elevations, as you can see here. The proposed elevations shown here show us a couple things, again, the general look, and the architectural kind of design of the existing structure would be maintained throughout this addition. At the first hearing in February before the planning commission, there were several kind of comments raised by the commission, and members of the public as well, about the design of it. Several suggestions were offered at that, at that point to improve the design. These things are kind of enumerated in the staff report, but had to do with maintaining consistency of materials, and it's always sort of encouraged to try to get things to tie in, both in terms of the overall shape and the architectural detail, but also the materials as well. So, these changes were made, and the applicants came back with a number of revisions that directly responded to the planning commission's feedback. As you can see on the north and the south elevation, that directly kind of are facing the adjacent neighbors to the north and the south, primarily clear-story windows have been used, this is a kind of a common approach to trying to maintain some privacy between neighboring residences, with the primary windows facing the west and the east, which would be over the, over the backyard, over that finger of San Clemente Creek and the marsh. And then there's also a deck that would be added, that extends off the back, the back porch there. Another element that was kind of updated that you see here, so, as I mentioned before, the garage does not need to be raised, but in an effort to kind of unify the design of the garage and the rest of the house, despite sort of having part of the house elevated and part of the house staying in place, was to sort of elevate the roof element over that, to kind of bring things together aesthetically, at the, at the direction of the planning commission. And then this is what that would help create for the applicants here, which is the master, a master suite and an office. Again, the lower floor kind of showing how that would, that would be somewhat reconfigured, the addition of the stairway there, and a new front porch. And then we also ask for kind of contextual elevations to show how this would relate to the neighboring properties, and that's shown here. And again, the kind of dotted line there is showing that change in elevation of the roofline related to the FEMA, the floodplain development requirements. Just providing several photos in the immediate vicinity here, kind of showing some of the design of some second-story additions, which have happened over the course of many years. This is directly behind, I believe, the appellant's property, so just around the corner of 109 Golden Heine. This is, and, and so you see kind of a combination of additions that have sort of gone over the entirety of the, of the lower floor, some like this, which are a bit more similar to what's being proposed, and sort of biased toward one side, and just, just several examples to kind of show that they take on various forms, but generally, as with the proposed application, sort of the effort is to mimic the existing architecture, both with respect to, you know, respecting the design of that particular house, but also in terms of trying to fit in with the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood and the history of the neighborhood. And this is just one of the many examples in that, in that vicinity of, of what this looks like, and this is, this is a fact, this is a fact of life in the floodplain, and with floodplain rising, you know, every other year, it seems, this is, you know, raising of, of these structures is, is a responsible thing to do, that the town absolutely encourages, and this is, this is what that can look like. So, it's, it's part of the change that we expect to see in these neighborhoods over the coming years. And another example of a, of a home on the street as well. So, this, this was approved by the planning commission unanimously, and was, staff recommended approval at that time as well. It's been appealed by, by the neighbors, as described in the staff report. Several reasons were given, staff provided some clarification on, on one of those regarding the three commissioners who did unanimously approve the project. One of the commissioners was recused, because he lives a few, few houses down, and another commissioner wasn't present at that, at that meeting. But that was a quorum, they, they approved the project, and that, that is what we're here today, because a request was made for the council to reconsider, and potentially overturn the planning commission's decision, or to reaffirm it. So, there's several options available to the commission, which include denying the appeal, which would uphold the planning commission's action by approving the attached resolution. The council can modify the planning commission's action by adding particular conditions of approval, or otherwise, or the council may approve the appeal, which would thereby overturn the planning commission's prior approval, in which case staff would return with a revised resolution, or the fourth option is to remand the action back to the planning commission for their kind of reconsideration and determination of appropriate conditions. So, that concludes my presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Bush. Any questions for Doug? No? Okay, then we will move on with this. If there are no questions, then if we could ask the appellant to make the presentation, and the appellant will be given 10 minutes. Is anybody here to represent the appellant?
I don't think there's anything further to be said, ladies and gentlemen, make your decision.
Okay, then, can I ask you, Teresa, how we should proceed from now if there is no appeal?
The matter is before you, and it's up to you to decide whether or not to approve the applicant's project, in other words, whether or not to overturn the appeal. The appeal is still in front of you, even though the, there is no one here to make a presentation. So, I would suggest you then have the applicant make a presentation.
Okay, good, so...
Madam Mayor, you know what, I have a question for the appellant, is that something, am I allowed to, to ask those questions, or is that not going to work?
I'm, I'm not clear that there is a representative, I'm not sure who was in the back, that made a comment, was that a representative of the applicant? It was?
Yes, my wife, Franz Kohler, we live across the street, we have...
Margaret, could you go to, yeah, thank you.
Under number five, your questions under...
Yeah.
Margaret Kohler. My husband is Franz, we live at 110 Golden Heine. That picture you see there is our home. This addition at 109 looks directly into our home, has effect on sunlight and privacy, and we have all of that in writing with you all. Based on what I have heard, based on what I see here in the audience, based on what I've read, it makes no point for me, as one person, my husband is critically ill, that's why he's not here tonight, to continue to present our position. But I do suggest to all of you, that when you're looking at these additions on filled ground, on perimeter foundations that were built in the 50s and 60s for single-story homes, that there should be some discussion about the integrity of the foundation, and that there should be some written document from a licensed engineer, not a contractor, that can substantiate that SED's foundation will handle this additional double-weight, dead weight on a perimeter foundation that has no adjustments or changes, and in addition is being raised two and a half feet. I think that answers your questions and mine.
Thanks, Margaret. I'm gonna ask at this point, I'm gonna ask staff question, Doug. Has there been engineering reports? I would assume that there has been, being that when you're raising a house, it, it would require that.
So, soils reports, engineering reports, those things that are, that may be required as part of the building permit submittal process, so that occurs following planning, issuing civil planning entitlement, so we don't require those typically for, for a project such as this, we don't require those at this stage. This is kind of a question of whether it should be done, that's kind of a question of how it can be done technically. I believe the applicants have, have procured a soils report that kind of, that may speak to this concern, but it isn't, it isn't something that's typically within the purview of the design review process.
Okay, so just to make certain that everybody is clear on this, before a project like this would be permitted, it would have to have had the soils engineering done?
Well, it's, engineering would have to be required, so it's, you know, and I just want to clarify, we do route applications at the design review stage to the other departments, whether that's the engineering department, building department, and so, typically, if they see any, if, for example, on hillside construction, we may ask certain, for certain applications, some additional work be done. These are typical, we've seen additions such as these throughout this particular neighborhood or other neighborhoods, Madera Gardens, for example. Don't typically ask for that at this stage, as Doug mentioned, but any building code-required reports and studies that need to be done would be done prior to obviously issuing a building permit.
So, what, I just want to make sure, that there would be an engineering report required before?
Engineering is part of the structural, yes, integrity of the, of the structure, making sure that that's been vetted by an, a licensed engineer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to come forth, and you have 10 minutes?
My name is Maureen Jokum, I'm the architect on the project. I want to address the concerns that were brought up by the appellant. First and foremost, we do have a soils report, the engineer, the geotechnical engineer took soil samples, had them tested, figured out the bearing capacity, and in this guideline has determined foundation requirements that the structural engineer will use, and like Doug said, it'll be part of the structural engineering permitted drawings, and drainage requirements. So, I can guarantee the council and the neighbor that the, there will be no adverse reaction to having a second floor on this property. So, if anyone wants to read technical reading, it's all in here. The other issue that was, has been brought up today were privacy concerns. As Doug originally showed, or someone showed on the Marin map, this property is across the street and over one. The distance between the two windows that she's concerned about, and the two front windows of our property is about a, between 122 and 135 feet. In plan view, there was a Marin map, she's at 110, we're at 109. So, the distance, I, I basically blew up Marin map to a scale that was appropriate to be able to dimension between the front window at 109 in our office to the approximate location of where the bedroom windows were, and like I said, it was over 100 feet. The, because of the skewed angle, because of the distance, because of the reflection off the glass, partial obstruction of the garage that protrudes at her property, plus the overhang, since we're above, I really don't think that there's a privacy issue. I would be more concerned, if I were her, of someone walking along the sidewalk in front of my house that's, you know, 25 feet away. And the other issue is, I don't know what one expects in terms of privacy on two windows that open to the street right away, because basically, you've got the privacy from the back, privacy from the side, but the street is the public right away, so there's no inherent, I don't know what the right word is for, expectation, I should say, of privacy. The other issue that she brought up was sun and light, I mean, our project... I mean, our project is quite a distance away. It's on the northeast side of her property. There's no way that we're going to shadow her property. As Doug, I don't want to reiterate everything that Doug said, but we presented a design initially to the Planning Commission. They did have some reservations. We went back to the drawing board, made some compromises in overall height. We dropped the building by a foot. We changed, we unified the finishes so that it was more uniform. And the biggest change we made was the owner agreed to take on the additional expense of actually raising the garage roof, which went a long way to appeasing the commissioner and actually provided a much better project because the main complaint about the project at its first inception was that the second floor over the garage seemed like a tower. And that's because the garage roof ridge was low and the rest of the roof was high. And so by raising the ridge of the garage, we have the same proportion as you'd normally have in a second floor. And the other thing I kind of wanted to reiterate rather quickly is something Doug mentioned as well, is we're in a floodplain. I can do what I can to keep the mass of the house as low as possible. I articulated the second floor. I have hip roof with a peak at only one point in the whole second level. So I tried to minimize the height of the roof as possible, but we have to raise it basically 29 inches. And that's not, you know, optional. We have to do it to protect the property. We have to do it because FEMA requires it. We have to do it because Correda Madera requires it. And truth be told, in this neighborhood of floodplains, this is the wave of the future. Between these houses that were originally built in the late 50s and early 60s, as they get updated, as they get enlarged, as an owner realizes he really wants to protect his investment, we're going to have houses raised. And the other issue that kind of comes up is at the end of this, near the end of the street, I guess it was a flood at some point, and a lot of those houses have been raised. And they haven't been raised that much. And like Doug mentioned, every couple of years FEMA decides to up it again. So our house is going to be a little higher than another house that was done maybe two years ago. But basically, there's really no choice. So I respectfully request that you deny the appeal and support the Planning Commissioners, I mean Planning Commission's approval of the project, unanimous approval of the project. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Are we at number five?
We are at number five. Yes, questions to the appellant, applicant, and...
I do, so does Jim, I think.
Jim?
Yeah, I have a question about your garage. Where will the top of the foundation of the garage end versus the flood level?
At the moment, we are not going to raise the garage slab. We're just going to raise the roof. But when we rebuild the walls, because the applicant is considering raising the garage slab as well, it's basically a cost consideration, we will be reporing the foundation edge so that it's up to two foot, five inches as well. So there'll be a curb in the garage that eventually we can fill in a slab if we want to. The other issue, because we had considered raising the garage, but there's also, when you're raising it that much, you're going to get into steep driveways, you're going to get into the connection to the existing site, which is fairly difficult to deal with. The people who have done it before have only dealt with about 12 inches, which is a lot more reasonable than basically almost two and a half feet.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with, there's other residences in the area where we have not put in the slot drains. We have standing water and when cars go through, they're worried about whether or not the wake will go actually into their garage. And so...
Interesting.
If you aren't going to ramp up the driveway, then at least make the first couple of feet of the garage so that it can take water easily.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
I do. Is there a concern, an existing concern raised by the owners at 94 Golden Hind or has that been addressed? So the original, one of the original Planning Commission meetings had a concern about that. And then a later staff report, or maybe it was the applicant's report, said that all, everybody else's concerns had been addressed except for the neighbors who are currently appealing. And then the most current version, or the appeal itself references 94 Golden Hind, but I don't know, A, what was the concern and B, has it been addressed?
94 Golden Hind is all the way around the corner.
It is.
And he was, he is an architect who had a vested interest in seeing the project be as good as it can be. So we, he looked at the project, had some concerns. We showed him the revised design. He did have some additional concerns, which he wrote in a letter, which I think is part of the staff report at some point, a lot of which he said, you could, you know, drop the height, but that might not be reasonable. You could, you know, he made all these suggestions, but at the same time said, maybe that's not feasible, maybe that's not worth it. But one thing, his main concern was the fact that when you raise the garage roof, that you get this big gap between, it becomes a tall wall there. And so at the meeting, in response to that, because we got that letter like an hour or two before the meeting, and so my response to that was to do a quick sketch and actually changed, if you can, Doug, do you mind putting up the extra elevation of the garage? So at last minute, what I did, I mean, one solution would be to make the garage door taller, but the garage door is brand new. So I thought, you know, if I can not replace the garage door...
Can you show me what we're talking about?
Yes, so...
You can take your mic.
Seriously? So what he was concerned about was the distance here. And so, I mean, before, the roof was, you know, two and a half feet lower, right? So it was more like normal relationship. And he was concerned about this, what he called, I think, an eyebrow or forehead, exactly. And so at the meeting, I thought, well, I could raise the garage door and make it, you know, a better relationship, but like I said, the door is brand new. So I thought, well, maybe if I put a heavier lentil, so I have a 12-inch, so in the, to the meeting, I brought the sketch with a heavier lentil, and the Planning Commission decided, that's a great idea. That helps make that proportion a little better. So that's what basically...
Got it. Thank you for going through that.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'll ask now for public comment, if anybody has any comments that they want to make on this project.
Hi, my name is Dawn Smith. I live right around the corner from the house in question, and I stand in full support of the addition that they want to do. It goes perfectly with our neighborhood. A lot of other people have done it, and I don't see any reason why it can't be approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chuck McDevitt. My wife, Marie, we both live at 101 Golden Hind, two doors removed from the applicant, and we fully support the project. We like to see people enhancing their property, and they're the type of family that all neighborhoods need to support and welcome and retain in the neighborhood. We added a second story to our house many years ago. I've lived there since 1969, and we had no problems with neighbors across the way complaining about privacy or lighting or anything like that. And we've had no problems since. No one has ever voiced an objection. And we went through the same process they're going through, but it was approved at the time, and I'd like to see this approved as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I guess I didn't say enough.
I just want to say, Marie McDevitt, our house was one of the ones you showed, and we have a second addition, and we have windows that are kind of high. There's no way I could see out those windows across the street. And unless you're standing there all day looking out, I don't see how it could be a privacy issue. And I was noticing today about where the sun was, and there's no way that sun was blocked at her house. So unless you're 10 feet tall and you want to look out those windows, you're not going to just see anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christopher Hessen. I live at 105 Golden Hind. I'm here with my wife and two kids. I think it's a great addition that he's putting on here, give his family some more room. I know they work from home and it's going to help them a lot. In full support of this. And I don't see any privacy issues across the street. Nobody's going to be looking across there. It's 120 feet from window to window. That's a pretty long distance. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I will close it to public comment. And for the applicant, do you have any kind of rebuttal at all? And the appellant? Okay, so anyway, final opportunity, counsel, any questions, anything? Okay, and no questions to staff? Then I will close it to public hearing, and we can bring it back for deliberation and findings and a motion.
I'm happy to start.
Thank you.
Our communities, most of our neighborhoods were built in the 50s or even earlier. Christmas Tree Hill was, and Chapman Park were the first parts of our town, and of course, Old Correda Madera Square. Those were the first parts of our town that were built up, but Mariner Cove was built in the 50s, my neighborhood was built in the 50s, Madera Gardens, many of the neighborhoods were. Those homes over the years have needed some updating. We've all seen a few homes in our neighborhoods fall into disrepair, maybe an older couple kind of can't keep up with the maintenance. I've seen that in my neighborhood. A new couple comes in and fixes it up, makes it a home for their family. Those are the kinds of changes we should be encouraging. They keep our housing stock current and valuable, and they help us all with maintaining a nice neighborhood, both for property values, but also for safety and for appearance and all the things, you know, we want in our neighborhoods. I support the applicants in their desire to want to create a home that can work for their family. Some of the homes that were built many decades ago don't work for our current lifestyle. They may not have space for a grandparent to come live if there is a disability or for some other reason they need to move in, or a home office if somebody works from home. Times have changed. You know, I grew up in a, in a house that had three bedrooms and one bathroom for a family of four. Could you imagine in Marin, one bathroom for a family of four? You wouldn't have it. It's just not kind of how we live these days. So, you know, I support the concept of improvements, but I also take very seriously neighbor concerns. So I did go out and I actually looked at the story poles from the bedroom of the appellant. Now, that home is across the street and over one, and I believe that there is enough distance between the two homes that the impact would really be extremely minimal if, you know, close to zero. Many of our homes are built fairly close together, close to the sidewalk. You know, that's part of living in the suburb. You can't expect to have zero impacts from neighborhood windows or people walking by. That's just kind of the nature of living in the suburbs. I also very much appreciate that they are raising the property. I know it was required. It's not easy because I know that's adding quite a bit to the expense. But as the person who represents our town on the Sea Level Rise Committee through Marin County Council of Mayors and council members and the county, I worry a lot about sea level rise, not to mention our current flooding situation. So glad it will be raised. That's one more home that will be safe from flooding. You know, it's a difficult neighborhood to deal with in terms of, you know, what the future might bring. So I believe that I can make all the findings that are necessary to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's action.
Thank you. Sloner, Jim?
Sure. So I appreciate the efficiency with which we're moving through today's hearing, and there was an opportunity for everybody to be heard, I think. The issues that were raised, I saw, number one was the Planning Commission, did they have a full quorum? I'm satisfied that they did, and consequently, the approval is consistent in that regard. Secondly, there were, the appeal mentions, there were objections at, of themselves at 110 Golden Hind and also at 94 Golden Hind. As far as I can make out, the objections at 110 Golden Hind were sunlight, privacy, and the soils condition. With respect to the soils condition, the applicant did provide a technical report, an expert's report. With respect to the privacy issues, I'm satisfied that the angle of the window, the partial obstruction, and the sheer distance mitigates or make it not a significant issue. And finally, the sunlight, I walked the area myself. I see no proof that there's a significant sunlight impact which would hinder making the findings. And with respect to the concerns at 94 Golden Hind, it's my own judgment or observation that the concerns were explicitly discussed and addressed. So my own conclusion is that I can make all eight of the findings in the proposed resolution pursuant to the municipal code.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I can make all the findings as well.
Okay, and I can as well. So if I could ask for a motion?
I will move to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's action by approving the resolution that is in our packet, number 17 slash 2018.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio? Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, then we will move along. I neglected a couple of meetings ago when we had closed session to report out of closed session, and so the item was, I'll hang on until everybody is left. Good night. Good night.
Thank you.
For, not too long ago, there was a new law that was set forth, and that was that... That was that if there were any discussions of salaries where, of staff, that it had to be addressed in public. This is something new, or relatively new. We had never been faced with that. And per our agreement with our, when we did the contract with our town manager, Todd Cusomano, one of the things was to do an annual evaluation, and there was also an agreement that he wouldn't, at this point in time, request a raise. However, in our closed session, we all agreed, and I think that for any of you that have worked at all with Todd, that we all agree that he has just done a stellar job of leading our town, and he's made a lot of tough decisions. And as a result of those decisions, things are looking better than they ever have looked. And so we felt unanimously that he was well-deserved of a raise. And you will see, if you have copies, there is no staff report, and he is recusing himself from this by leaving the room because he's probably mortified that we have to talk about this in public, which I guarantee you in Sacramento, nobody has to do it in public, right? But the locals have to do it in public.
Carl, are we on the agenda item or are you... Carla, are we on the agenda item, or are you reporting out of closed session?
We are on it, agenda item.
Got it.
And this is because we could've done it probably, yeah, but anyway. So, um, as part of our agenda, um, item, here, um, we are considering the adoption of a resolution for a one-time performance bonus for town manager. And, uh, is there, are there any questions of my fellow council members? And if no questions, is there, are there any comments from our audience here? Seeing none, I'll close it to public comment and bring it back.
So, I just wanna, um, uh, this, there was a brief report done, um, by Daria, and Daria could not, um, be here this evening, and so I was asked to just present the report, and I just wanted to state that the amount of the, um, the bonus would be five percent of his annual salary, and that would be a one-time payment to the town manager of $10,950. And that is not, um, pensionable, um, and again, it's a one-time, um, it is, it would not, um, affect his salary ongoing.
Correct, as I said, it was a merit bonus. Okay, so, uh, if there are no comments, I'll close it to public comment, bring it back, yes?
I support this, however, I believe that the council, a few years ago, discussed that issues like this would be handled over two meetings. So, are we simply going to conditionally approve this, or just, um, continue this to the next meeting and maybe put it on a consent calendar and actually approve it at the next meeting? Was that the intention, or were we intending to, um, approve this tonight?
I was not aware that the council had adopted that rule.
Nor was I.
Um...
It was on an unofficial sort of understanding.
It's an understanding, in the interest of transparency, um, and to give the public as much notice as possible before, um, decisions were made. But, but really, I think the intention was for things like the union contract and major salary and benefit changes, that those would be done over two meetings. So, I don't know that this rises to that level, um, but the, the goal was just simply to give the public plenty of opportunity to be aware of what's going on so that they could provide input.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like it's a policy that you have made and could, and, and that you didn't necessarily address this, so it is within your discretion whether you wanna apply that rule. And, um, go ahead and move this to the next time, or move forward.
As far as I'm concerned, we do not have an official rule, it may have been a, you know, an informal discussion. But I think that, you know, one of the things I feel, um, with respect to, um, our town manager, and this isn't a dealing, a negotiation with, like, union things, that we have to do with the SEIU and fire and police and so forth, that, um, I don't see any need that we have to belabor it, it couldn't be more public than it is right now. And, uh, so I was just, I mean, we could just adopt this resolution.
Jim? I'm... Five minutes ago, I would've agreed with Carla, and then Diane reminded us that there was a long discussion that... In fact, wasn't that a, uh, civil grand jury recommendation that when you're do- doing these types of negotiations, you do it over two meetings?
Well, yeah, but again, I, and I'm not saying that we need to do that in this case, I'm, I'm just asking the question. And Carla has a point, that this isn't a big, um, salary increase that's gonna, you know, be in place in perpetuity and is gonna affect pensions and all this kinda stuff. This is just a one-time modest bonus, it's, it's not a, a big budget hitting kind of decision.
Would it be...
So...
Well, I'm just thinking, continuous and then put it on the consent calendar next time.
You actually, there's, there was a change to the Brown Act in the last year that would require the final action to be reported, taken at a meeting where there was an oral presentation, and so because there's no oral presentation on your consent calendar, you cannot have a final action on this on the consent calendar, it's a, it's a rule that applies to executive compensation.
Okay. And I can't remember how we described it on the last agenda. How did we describe this on the last?
We didn't, it was a performance evaluation in closed session.
We could just take the exact same wording that you currently have, and i- if you, if you decide that you wanna move this to the next meeting, we would just take the exact package we have now and repeat it.
So, that mean that, I mean, for what it's worth, um, and Carla, I know you'd like to move forward with it, but that makes sense to me as well. My own thought is that we all sort of comment now publicly that we're supportive of this, which I am, and I suspect each of you are, and that we further compliment and thank Todd for his service, and simply, um, indicate that we'll approve this at the next meeting in the absence of some evidence or, uh, something that's provided, which would make us reconsider. My own sense is, good job, Todd, we intend to award it to you, we'll put it on the next meeting. What do you think? So, that, my motion is that we continue it to a date certain, which is the next, um, the next meeting, whatever that one is. May first.
And then we have to have an oral presentation?
It, it can be very quick, it can be two sentences.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio? Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
No, because I don't think it applies to this particular position. Okay, we will move on, um... Let's see. Here we go. Okay, this is regarding, uh, the next council meeting and consider, uh, for cancellation. But before we do that, I just wanted to announce that we have two of our candidates in the audience who are running for council. We have Eli Beckman, and we have Valeria Sasser. Thank you for coming this evening. And, uh, Rebecca, um, would you like to discuss the, um, schedule for our July meeting?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This, um, this request is being brought forward because we are in the position of having, uh, June elections for the first time, and the results of the June elections won't be certi- certified until after the second meeting in June, so we can't, um, ratify the results of the June elec- June election and swear in new council members until they are, are seated July, they can be seated after July first. So, we, um, have several planned staff vacations that will make preparing for the July seventeenth meeting difficult, and we will also have new council members to get acclimated and, um, educated and onboard. So, we thought it would be best to, um, schedule, to request cancellation of the July seventeenth meeting and plan for the swearing in and seating of the new council at the July third meeting, um, make it a brief meeting.
July first or third?
July third.
Oh.
Wait, sorry. Yes, July third. And then with that, we are considering honoring the retiring council members at the June nineteenth town council meeting, if, um, that is amenable to the two of you. So, that, that is basically the, the request that is before you, is the cancellation of the July seventeenth meeting and, um, then the swearing in of the new council on the July third meeting.
May I ask a question, Carla?
Sure.
Can you just go over the calendar again, so what date is the election?
The election is June fifth.
All right, and then what date, um, uh, does the term begin, July first?
The new terms would begin July first. We can't certify the results of the election until the county sends their certification, which is usually three weeks after the election, which, um, is most likely after the Ju- June nineteenth meeting. So, at the July third meeting, we will certify the results of the election, swear in the three elected council members. And in preparation for the staff report, I did reach out to the four, uh, candidates for town council and confirmed with each of them that they would be available to attend the July third meeting in order to be sworn in. Two of the candidates are here this evening, so if anything has come up with their, their schedules and they can no longer make it, they can, um, state that during the public comment period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, is that okay with everybody?
Sure, do we need to do this? Do we need to, like, make a motion or something?
We need to approve the, the cancellation of the July seventeenth meeting.
I'll move that we approve the cancellation of the July seventeenth council meeting.
I guess the, the other option would be to not approve the cancellation of the July seventeenth meeting and instead, cancel the July, July thir- I mean, it is an option. It's, it's not a staff recommended option, but it is an option.
We've got a motion and a second, I think. I moved and Jim seconded, right?
Did you?
Or did you want to do something?
Do we have public comment?
Not yet.
Oh, sorry. My bad.
Anybody in the public have a comment? Okay, close it to public comment.
Discussion? Okay, I'll make the motion now. Jim?
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Aye.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio? Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, and then we'll move right along, um, consideration of adoption of resolution number nineteen slash twenty eighteen opposing the Tax Fairness Transparency and Accountability Act of twenty eighteen.
Were we already approved the June fourth, or July, uh, June fourth, uh, meeting?
That was on the consent calendar.
Okay, good.
But, yes, and to answer your question, on the consent calendar, there was an item to move the June fifth, twenty eighteen election to Monday, June fourth, um, in order to not conflict with election night activities.
Okay, Rebecca, do you wanna do the Tax Fairness Transparency?
I will do my best. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, this is a request that was sent out by the League of California Cities, requesting that jurisdictions, um, consider approving two things. One, um, a resolution declaring opposition to the Tax Fairness Transparency and Accountability Act of twenty eighteen, and also consider approving a draft letter to be sent to various members of the California Business Roundtable, which is proposing this initiative, um, and sending them to members of the Business Roundtable that do business in your jurisdiction. So, if you approve the resolution, um, this initiative is, is being sponsored by the California Business Roundtable, and what the Tax Fairness Transparency and Accountability Act of twenty eighteen does, it would drastically limit local revenue authority while making, um, comparatively minor modifications to state authorities. For cities and other local agencies such as the town of Quarter Madera, it would apply retroactively and may void any local measure approved by local voters on or after January first, twenty eighteen, but prior to the effective date of this act. This is an initiative being circulated that needs to achieve a certain threshold of signatures in order to be placed on the November ballot, but this is on the League of California Cities radar at the moment because it's already surpassed the twenty-five percent threshold. So, the League of California Cities is actively reaching out to and working with the California Business Roundtable, to either get them to amend their initiative or, or stop circulation of it entirely. But with the letters, um, for the portion requiring the approval of the letters to be sent out to Roundtable members, one of the purposes, oh, I lost my place. Basically, we, we wanted to send letters to members of the Business Roundtable, letting them know what effect that this initiative, if approved by voters, would have on our town finances.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. The League is, um, has, uh, recommended that we oppose this, and, um, I think we're, the one thing that we are always concerned about is our local control, um, not only of land use, but of our, uh, money too. And so, I just wanna ask if, uh, you wanna go along with the recommendation of the League?
But, public comment or no, do we already do that?
Oh, okay, public comment, sorry. Okay, seeing none, I'll close it to public comment, okay.
Do you wanna say something?
No.
Okay.
But actually, I, I should add that, um, the members of the California Business Roundtable that staff identified as doing business in the town of Quarter Madera include Chevron, Comcast, Farmers Insurance, and Wells Fargo. And staff is proposing to send letters to each of these entities.
And also Granite.
Do they do business in town?
We, indirectly, they do.
Okay.
We showed slides of, uh, Public Works, and they supply, uh, materials for it.
Okay, it's granite construction, eh?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just one additional comment, um, in just reading the, this is a boilerplate it, we didn't make any changes to this letter, and I think you may historically would like to make some changes to it.
Yep.
May I recommend, we're not under a time crunch, we do have, wanna, maybe recommend is have one council member with, with the mayor, wordsmith both the resolution and the letter, and come back to you at the next meeting for approval?
Sure.
May be helpful to, and if any council members would like to forward their comments to me, we would happily, uh, add those as well.
Well, I'm happy to give a comment right now.
Okay.
You should do it, Dan.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
All right, I'd like to point out that if you go to the website, cbrt.org, which is the website for the California Business Roundtable, go to About, and you will ha- see a listing of all of the members of this organization. It is a grand total of thirty-one corporations. That is, but, this is by no means an organization that represents the overall business community in our state. This is a select few giant corporations that are trying to shove this down the throats of the voters of this state because they have a particular, um, I, I don't know, political or financial, or, or for some reason, they, they have this goal of getting this passed. This kind of initiative is what frustrates me about the initiative project, uh, process in California. This is not what our communities need, this is the exact opposite of what our communities need. We need flexibility to do what we need to do to protect our citizens and our communities. I say we wordsmith the heck out of this to make this a lot stronger. And I also recommend that we include all thirty-one corporations on this and just really let them know how this is just not what our small community, well, any of our communities need. This is not, uh, the kind of act that benefits all of us. This is to benefit thirty-one corporations, and I just don't get it. There you go, I said my thing.
Many of the corporations that do this, if you went into their branch and demanded to know the cost of the teller cashing your check, they don't have the cost accounting systems in place to fulfill the requirements, so they couldn't do it themselves. Okay? And they're expecting every jurisdiction in the state to have a cost accounting system better than that their in-house systems are. And I'm looking at you as Wells Fargo. It's my bank, unfortunately.
Okay, so do you wanna work on this, Jim?
Yeah, and, uh, I'll need to work with Teresa and Todd, 'cause I think it's the feet section that, uh, causes me issues.
Carla, do you have one comment?
Yes.
So, unfairly supportive, I recommend that whatever modified version of letter you guys do, that we authorize the mayor to sign it and so forth. Here's my request to you scholars, wordsmiths, brief, brevity, brevity's the key. So, uh, we have this lengthy resolution, which, um, says all the relevant stuff. My own suggestion would be, enclosed, please find our town's resolution. Have a great day.
Period.
But, uh, if you feel obliged to be a little more incisive, I'm with you, I don't oppose it, I'm just saying, this language essentially is a repeat of what's in the resolution. So, I would say, why don't we agree to do the resolution, attach it to a cover letter saying, "Our town believes these things to be true," and that's it. But whatever you like, if you wanna knock it to them, I'm with you.
Okay, great, so now, let's see, we are going to, um...
Should we just continue? Should we just continue this motion?
We're just going to continue it. Yeah, we'll continue it and then look for adoption at probably the next meeting or meeting following.
So I'll move that we continue it to a date certain. How long do you think we need? How long do you two think you need to do your thing?
Don't look at me, it's those two.
Oh, I thought it was you, Diane. You're very.
Oh, no, I totally, I know, I don't have the bandwidth right now.
Okay. So Carla, you and Jim? How long do you think?
Next meeting.
When is the next meeting? It's after the 29th.
Okay.
So long as it's after the 29th. Yeah.
The first meeting after the 29th, if you can fit it in the calendar. Is that the same one that we're doing, the election thing?
May 1st.
Oh, May, oh, right, May 1st, yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll move that we continue the item to May 1st.
Okeydoke.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio. Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes. Okeydoke, thank you, and we have no sanitary district business items, so we'll move on to our town manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Just early, most importantly, our thoughts and prayers are with Councilmember Ravazio on his speedy recovery. Just a scary event, and you just can't make up what he went through that day to get to the hospital. You know, he not only was involved in a vehicle, he was on his bicycle and was involved with an accident with another vehicle, but on his way to the hospital, his ambulance was also struck by a vehicle. And so just a really scary morning for Councilmember Ravazio. So our thoughts and prayers are with him, and really appreciate all the support from the community and staff of, you know, a lot of people, there's been a really big outpouring, and so we really appreciate that. Two things quickly, two surveys are currently going on within the community. One is our customer service survey amongst all departments in town, and so that is going really well, and so we're going to keep that going until the end of April, I believe, and then we'll reevaluate that as we move forward. So that's going really well. And also, we just, Lorena put together and sent out via our social media and website, a survey regarding our noise ordinance. And so it's a simple survey, but it's to give us some feedback on what our community thinks and feels about noise issues within our community. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Any questions? Okay, we'll start to my right.
No reports.
Okay.
I've got a couple. First of all, I attended a meeting of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency, CMSA. One thing came up, as you know, that we are discussing various changes to the joint powers agreement between all the member agencies of CMSA. We, as the council, have approved initial changes to several of the sections. One thing that came up as a discussion was the appropriateness of, I shouldn't say the appropriateness, but the fact that Larkspur is a member agency of CMSA, and yet they are not a sewer collection agency. They are actually a member now of Ross Valley Sanitary. The Larkspur membership in CMSA predates their joining of Ross Valley Sanitary, which is, so they still have a seat on CMSA, but we're going to start the discussion of whether or not it makes sense for Larkspur to still have a seat on the board of CMSA, or if there's some other way it might be kind of organized. Anyway, it came up, excuse me, it was not on the agenda, so we, I believe it will be on the next agenda for the CMSA meeting in, in May. So if any of you have thoughts about that, you might want to let me know, or we can even perhaps agendize something. Larkspur did, excuse me, Larkspur did issue a letter saying that they would kind of defer to CMSA to give their input on what CMSA might want to see. So I did want to share that. I seriously doubt anything will be decided at the next meeting, it's just simply a discussion item. I also attended the Transportation Authority of Marin Executive Committee meeting. One thing I wanted to let you all know about is an increase in the upcoming budgets for electric vehicle infrastructure. Up until now, it has been the TAM board policy to use public funds strictly for public infrastructure. So helping to subsidize EV charging in public, like municipal parking lots, maybe library parking lots, city halls, et cetera, or public fleet. So if, for instance, Nevada Public Works wanted to buy an electric vehicle, TAM was willing to help out with a subsidy. There were not a lot of takers, especially for the fleet vehicles. So the Executive Committee of TAM is recommending to the full TAM board that that program be expanded, both a little bit more money added to it, but also kind of branching out from just public charging stations to charging infrastructure in publicly accessible private property. First one that might come to mind are, is a shopping mall. So it would help to kind of bridge the cost for the private property owner. For instance, if PG&E can, you know, subsidize part of it, but they require a match for the private property owner, maybe TAM can help out with part of that in exchange for making the electricity public, free of charge for the public for six months or a year or something. That way, the public would get the benefit. So even, even though, and we're talking maybe about a $1,500 subsidy is what I would envision. But I'd be curious to hear your input, and that will be discussed at the next TAM board meeting. If anybody is interested in more information, let me know. But I think it's something that we should be encouraging, because I know a lot of people are looking at EVs, and I'm even considering possibly buying one, and it's kind of the way of the future.
A question?
Yes.
Of the charging stations? Do they have standardized plugs? Or does Tesla?
Some do.
Does Tesla have one plug and GM have another plug?
Tesla has their proprietary, but everybody else uses something else. So I kind of doubt it would be just like a proprietary kind of a thing that would be subsidized. And again, it would only be if there was a benefit to the community, such as free charging for a particular time, something to kind of give back. So we're not just expending taxpayer funds for private property infrastructure.
So Diane, I would like to talk to you about your comments after the meeting, and I would encourage you, a member of the public who has comments about electrical vehicle charging. It's a debate, a mild debate, a friendly debate, we're having at Marin Clean Energy about whether there ought to be different rates for those consumers at their houses or their businesses, at their private businesses who have charging stations, because are we, as a community, should we be encouraging, fostering the use of electrical vehicles? And if so, is there some monetary like supplement we ought to, which just sounds like very similar to the debate you're having at TAM?
You got, don't forget that this California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC, has arranged for or ordered PG&E to spend quite a bit of money subsidizing EV infrastructure. So those opportunities are out there. So if these private property owners are going to take them up on that, but it requires a matching, matching funds, that's where TAM is kind of looking. So we're talking kind of.
I'm glad, I mean, this is a good example to me of why these reports are useful, because it just wouldn't even occur to me, of course TAM's thinking about this, but you may not have thought of the fact that Marin Clean Energy's thinking about the same issue.
Actually, I'd heard that.
Oh.
I just think you guys haven't made a decision as to how you're approaching it.
We're very skilled at putting off decision-making as long as possible.
Oh, my, okay.
Okay?
As long as Marin Clean Energy come to, how should I put it, determined a way to balance the load so that if you're running solar during the day, but you want to charge your car at night, you can in some way shift the load from one to the other?
So we have, one of the discussion points is a rate structure, which would encourage users to be using their electricity, primarily things like electrical vehicle charging or whatever, in the wee hours of the morning, because nobody else is using electricity and you would, and it's cheaper than anyway, but make it even cheaper so that, but the only way to do what they call balancing, what they call the duck curve, would be to, Tesla, funnily enough, if not the third time in the same conversation, sells like batteries you can put on your house. That's the only way that I know of to do that. Right now, if you have solar power or some other, you know, renewable power source and you're, you, as you generate the power, you feed it back into the grid, and then there's a reduction on your bill for the amount of money or the amount of power that you've put in. You can't do what I think, what I had assumed it was a few years ago before I joined Marin Clean Energy, which is if you have solar panels, you can like direct it into your car. That's like not how it works. But you could sort of get there, or something similar to it, with these batteries you can put on your house.
Right.
Which are expensive, by the way, it's like five grand or something.
At least.
Yeah.
But.
But they are cool.
And when there was a, when legislation was proposed in Sacramento to encourage it, a certain local power reseller opposed that legislation.
Marin Clean Energy opposed what, what legislation?
Weiner had a bill that would, in effect, give credits and subsidies to folks who wanted to put in battery packs in their houses.
I don't know. Sorry.
Yeah, that's something.
Okay.
You guys need to work through.
Did you ever report to?
No.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. First of all, I attended the League of California Cities Housing Community Development, or Community and Economic Development meeting down in Pomona, and we heard the initial government or the governor's budget, which sounded very, very robust. It sounded very promising, but then we will come back to May and we will hear the May revise, when it's, could be totally different. What, what was really focused on in the whole meeting, the General Assembly and then in the housing, was the problem of homelessness that is growing exponentially in the state, and trying to find a solution to it. And it was really a very interesting discussion that we had for about four hours on this problem in the Policy Committee, and that is that, one of the things that was brought up was that we can't really find a solution until we find out what the problem is, and there's so many different problems impacting so many individuals that are within the homeless population, that it's really very difficult, bordering on impossible, to fix this. There are environmental issues. There were comments about homeless sleeping on the public streets, or even on private property, and is this just because something happened, they were evicted for some reason, where it was almost a no-fault situation, or is it something bordering on a criminal issue, or whether it is some sort of mental or emotional problem? So at any rate, there is a big focus to really put a lot of money in with this upcoming budget, in to trying to find some sort of remedy to at least address this problem and to see some sort of improvement. Also, cities were urged to apply for SB 1 funds for transportation, that there's money still out there, and to grab it while you can. Then the other thing, one other thing that was really kind of scary, there are always a lot of bills. We get packets of million bills, and one of them was dealing with JPAs, what we were just talking about. And it was to the extent when we're looking at pension liability and what the potential is, holding JPAs responsible for retirement.
You mean the joint several liability?
Yeah. And that all of a sudden, somebody like Corder Madera may have a JPA with San Rafael, for example, and we're doing okay with our pension liability, but our counterpart in the same JPA isn't. We all get mixed into one boat and we're held responsible. So that is something with, especially with, with our town, that's making such an effort to address pension liability, we've got to really be careful with our JPA agreements that we don't get into that. So we'll watch the legislation on that. The other thing that was, that I found very disturbing, was the discussion on Scott Weiner's Senate Bill 827, and for those of you that aren't real sure about what that is, it was if any jurisdiction is within a quarter of a mile of a transit route that stops at least every 15 minutes, which we have on Paradise, on the Paradise pad there, that then everything within a quarter of a mile of that area, which could bring you over to Madera Gardens, I mean, it brings you really close, all of a sudden, you, by right, eight-story buildings can be.
It's a terrible bill. It's a terrible bill. I know what you're talking about.
And that there's no control over design reviewer density, no parking requirement at all, nothing, just to build all these high-density projects along.
And no requirement that there be transportation six months after the building goes up.
Correct, nothing. And so people were upset about it, particularly when you sit at the table and hear people, for example, one of the supervisors from, or the council members from Oakland, who is behind this 100%, but happily, at 5:54 today, I got an email from Nancy Hall Bennett, our League of California Cities, that the Transportation Committee threw it out.
Oh, good.
And that was a lot in thanks to our representative, Mike McGuire.
Who's fantastic.
Who is just amazing, and I mean, he really had to stand his grounds to get that one. So it's, we're off the hook for that. But it's scary how many months we've gone by and how much traction that particular bill got. So anyways, that is all I have to report, and now we'll just take a look at the draft for the upcoming meeting, and we'll bring that letter back, the Tax Fairness Transparency.
We will also be most likely bringing back a request for opposition to AB 1912, which is what you just talked about with the JPAs.
Yes, and you know what, Rebecca, can I ask this just to get an opinion from the council? A lot of the cities have been voting on whether or not to support the Sanctuary City deal.
Let's stay out of that, Max.
You know, the Police Council did discuss that at one point.
And it's been brought up again, requesting, and showing a lot of cities that have stepped forth and taken positions against, and many that have taken a position for. And it was just that I didn't want to, what shall I say? I felt it was something that was worth discussion, I, otherwise. Otherwise, I would just make a decision on behalf of the council without asking. And I just felt that that was perhaps overstepping my bounds.
Make a decision about what? About putting it on the agenda or not putting it?
No, whether to, whether to even have a discussion on it.
Okay.
Get up to Police Council.
I'm fine with not discussing it at council and not taking a position and leave it to Police Council.
Okay.
Whether or not Police Council wants to make a decision.
Thank you, Jim.
That's what I would recommend.
Thank you, Jim.
Police Council?
Great, okay.
They know what they're doing.
Never mind. Never mind.
I've got an issue. Can we discuss 828?
What's that, Jim?
The following one after 827?
Yeah.
I think it's going to fold probably along with...
What is it? What's the topic?
I don't know all the details, but the thing that stuck with me is it was, you had the zone for Rena, 200 percent of your quota.
Oh, my God. Oh, yeah, the Legislative Committee's taken a position in opposition to that.
Okay. So...
Yeah, and I think a lot of that 828 was contingent upon 827. And being that 827 went down in defeat today, it probably, I just hurried up to come over here, and so I didn't see if there was a follow-up for 828.
I say just keep an eye on it, and if it looks like in the future we need to discuss it, let's agendize.
Right.
Good.
And I know that Mill Valley people have taken a real, not the council, but individuals have been real proactive in letting a voice. So, anyway, we are having a closed session tonight.
Oh, we are?
So I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting with all of our wishes to Bob Ravazio for a speedy recovery. Okay? The meeting is adjourned.